Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I think we are through with all of those recordings. So at this point, Dr. Fanoi, if you'd like to make the recommendation for ADL, excuse me, AD1?
Yes, sir. I recommend the board approve the attached 2020-2021 School Reopening Plan, including starting the school year with distance learning for all students, and allowing for a phased return to brick-and-mortar in-person instruction when county health conditions permit. And delegate the superintendent authority to implement this plan as necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students and employees.
Dr. Robinson, are you making the motion? Seconded by Ms. Brill, open for discussion.
Thank you. I do appreciate everyone taking their time for all of that input. It is not, it isn't easy to make a phone call into like a vacuum and not even know that you're being heard, but we did hear you, and we thank you for that input. I am proposing an amendment to the recommendation tonight to delay the opening of school for virtual instruction until September 8th, the day after Labor Day. Mike and Justin, please don't panic yet. We'll get to that later. The primary reason that I am proposing this delay, which I realize four weeks is significant, is that the longer we wait to begin, the longer we will have to keep our kids in face-to-face instruction. And a month, four weeks, can bring us significant new information on where we are with our pandemic crisis. We acknowledge that face-to-face instruction is the most effective way to teach. By the way, I'll be past my three minutes. Teachers never dreamed in their wildest imaginations that they would be teaching virtually. They want to do a great job. Delaying opening will give our teachers more time to prepare for opening with virtual instruction. It will give us more time to find every student, more time to get these computers in their hands, and more time to get appropriate Wi-Fi in homes. It also gives parents more time to make arrangements for their children. We didn't know until a week ago what the plan looked like. People knew what may happen, but it's just now that parents know they have to make arrangements. And it isn't about childcare, but certainly that is an issue for so many of our parents in our school district. Parents aren't teachers. I heard this in a few of the speakers. We would not expect a high school math teacher to teach first-grade reading, yet we're expecting parents to work with their children through varying grade levels and courses. And sure, they're being taught, but you know how much work that will require on their end. Our teachers have been using technology in their classrooms for at least a decade, probably longer. However, children sitting in front of a computer is not a substitute for face-to-face teaching. I understand that there is a salary issue in terms of a pay gap. I received an email earlier today, and I have been texting Mr. Burke, with a teacher who had a great idea. I think she's a teacher and a parent. But she said, why don't we go ahead and have teachers begin as scheduled on the 3rd or even the 10th? Let them do their week of preschool, which would then get them started in work days. Then we go ahead, they take a break, and I realize we may be having to take some other days from some other time in the calendar. I also realize it means we will be asking them to work later into the, at the end of the school year, but not work more days than they are contracted to work. But they could take a break. If they want to participate in voluntary in-service, they can, whatever they need to do. But then we wait and bring our students back on September 8th. Okay, so I realize, staff, that this is a ton of work, and we do also appreciate you. We know that we can't make everybody happy. We can't meet everybody's needs. So it finally has to come down to, what do our kids need? I so strongly ask that I get some support to make this happen. Thank you.
So, Board members, you know, the superintendent had the whole presentation for us. Barbara, Mrs. McQuinn made a modification to the motion. I didn't realize that was coming at this point, so that we can do the presentation first. But if somebody wants a second motion, and we'll hold the vote until key, until the deputy superintendent presents, or the superintendent has whoever present, and then we can take care of Mrs. McQuinn's motion at that point. So, Mrs., Dr. Robinson, are you seconding that? Okay, all right, so is everybody okay? We'll hold the vote on the motion. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. I'm okay with holding the vote on the motion, but are we going to discuss it now or discuss it later? I do have another piece that I'd like to add to it, but I also have strong thoughts in opposition to it. So, do you, are we discussing it now?
I think it probably best because I'm sure that the superintendent is going to go through some part of the presentation that's going to talk about the start date, and we can certainly take care of it then. And then, after the presentation's over, what the first thing we can do is vote on Mrs. McQuinn's motion, and we can hold off on the main motion until anybody else wants to make any other modifications to it. Is that okay with everybody? See a head shake? Okay. So, Dr. Fanoi, do you want to go ahead with your staff presenting to us?
Yes, sir. At this time, I have Deputy Superintendent Keith Oswald come up with his team, Dr. Glenda Sheffield, our CAO, and others. And so at this time, I turn it over to Mr. Oswald.
Thank you, Dr. Fanoi, and good evening, School Board members. Can you all see my screen? Just want to be sure. Okay, thank you. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the reopening plans for the 2021 school year. This plan is broken into three sections. There's a lot of information we will be going through tonight. So if we could try to hold questions, and we'll break that down and take some breaks after these three areas. The first, around the data and how we got to the point to recommend starting in a distance-learning environment. Then, second, to really take a deep dive in all the improvements around distance learning that has occurred since we closed out school this past year. And then, how do we create that path forward to get back into school buildings, making sure that that's safe, how we use data, and a phased approach to ensure that school administrators, teachers, students can get used to the new routines and procedures that will, under this COVID experience that we're all going through. Starting with our vision and mission, we're always trying to provide that world-class education and ensuring that all of our students reach their highest potential. We know that as we left off at the last school year, it was very difficult to do that in that distance learning. However, we've made many improvements to ensure that we reach our vision and mission as a school district. This information was presented as part of the reopening task force in a previous workshop for the School Board. Since the Governor's Plan for Recovery plays a critical role in our reopening plans as a school district, it needs to be referenced as part of the work ahead. Governor DeSantis moved Palm Beach County into Phase 1 effective May 11, and our county remains in Phase 1 as of today. While many Floridians, many Florida counties were moved into Phase 2 on June 5th, Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach were excluded. Once again, Palm Beach County is in Phase 1. So while parents, staff, and other communities may have seen information from other districts around the state regarding their school reopening plans, it is important to note a majority of those school districts are located in Florida counties that are currently in another phase of the recovery compared to Palm Beach County. In a presentation on April 29, 2020, the same day the recovery plan was released, the governor shared that all schools would remain in distance learning as part of Phase 1. So this is a graphic that the governor used during that press conference. Again, Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach in Phase 1. In addition, in the recovery plan, the governor speaks a lot to the use of metrics and data when moving forward to the next phase. So in particular, we can see when we closed out school, the numbers were much lower at that time, and we've had continuous spikes in the number of COVID-19 cases moving forward. And in the plan, it states if there are spikes in the number of cases, that we should remain in the current phase as we are today. In addition to the guidance from the state, the superintendent also formed a Health Advisory Committee composed of multiple local health and medical experts across Palm Beach County, including Dr. Elena Alonso, the Director of the Florida Department of Health for Palm Beach County. This slide shows some of the organization's Health Advisory Committee members and who they are affiliated with, although some of them are highly regarded physicians in private practice. The superintendent formed the Health Advisory Committee several weeks ago in response to COVID-19, and tasked them with providing the district with health-related recommendations and guidance to ensure the safety and well-being of all students and staff moving forward. At the committee's most recent meeting on July 6, the committee recommended to the superintendent to delay the physical reopening of schools. They cited a number of issues and concerns, including that when we left off back in March, there was approximately 70 new cases per day, where now we are exceeding 400. Also, the concern of children under 18 and those testing positive at over a 30% rate. So, based on those three areas that the governor's recovery plan, the increase of the number of cases and the recommendations from the Health Advisory Committee, this is why we brought forward the recommendation that was just read, to start in a distance-learning environment for the 2021 school year. Before we move into the next phase of this presentation, I'd like to start, stop and see if there's any board questions.
Yeah, I have several board members that already put their hands up. So I have Mrs. Whitfield, then Mrs. Andrews, then Mrs. Brill.
I actually wanted to speak on the, on Mrs. McQuinn from earlier, so I can hold. Thank you.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. I was looking at the Health Advisory Committee, and one of the first things I'd like to ask, is this committee still active? And can you get board information? As you've said, Elena Alonso, but I would like to know who are the health leaders that's on this committee personally? I do see the names of the different agencies there, but I've never seen the names of the folks who've actually been meeting. A little bit more information about how much they were meeting? I see there was one meeting that's on this agenda, but how often they have been meeting? One of the things that we heard from the people on the phones is they had concerns about this Health Advisory Committee. So I think the board needs to know, who are the people, how often they're meeting, and if this committee is still intact or has it sunsetted?
Yes, Ms. Andrews, we can provide you the name, the individuals who are a part of this committee, and they are still active. In fact, later in the presentation, I will talk about when we get to the metrics for moving forward, how we want to use the superintendent's Health Advisory Committee to help support us in the right metrics based off the governor's recovery plan.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. I was just in my hand here with the comment about Mrs. McQuinn's request, but I will have questions beginning at page 23.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the deputy superintendent? Vice Chairman Shaw?
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Oswald, related to the governor's order. There's three things. One is, this morning, at the Board of, State Board of Education meeting, the governor reiterated his position of expecting all the schools to be open. This afternoon, he had a press conference, and at their press conference, he gave more flexibility. And we are still under Phase 1. Also today, the latest numbers showed that there were 500 additional cases, and I believe 19 deaths in Palm Beach County. And we now, Florida, California, and New York have the highest number of cases in the country. So, I'm a little troubled on just what authority do we have when we get to the point that we submit a plan to the state, and they, and they decide that they're not going to accept that plan or want it modified? What, what are the implications? I don't know if this is something that Ms. Rico needs to address or Mr. Oswald.
Ms. Rico, would you respond? If it's a legal issue, would you like to respond, Ms. Rico? Would you rather?
I'll let Mr. Oswald respond, and if need be, I'm happy to talk about it, too.
So, what you're speaking to, Mr. Shaw, is last week, the executive order that came out from the commissioner, and within that executive order, there were a number of assurances that each school district had to work towards if they were going to provide distance learning as an option for their community. So it's important to note that's the essence of this executive order, because what the Department of Education recognizes is that there's families throughout Florida that want to stay in a distance-learning environment. This is what the state is calling an innovative learning environment. Now, they're putting oversight in that process around state and federal statutes, and how we are going to ensure that we're meeting those regulations in this template that has to be completed. A lot of the information we're going to go into shortly is about how we're going to meet those assurances, and we're going to talk about that in this section in a few minutes around the state and federal mandates addressing the achievement gap. One of the assurances which has gotten the most attention is that all schools will open their bricks-and-mortar buildings five days a week to families. However, there is a qualifier. And what I'd like to do, I'm just going to skip forward quickly to that slide so I can show the community that there is a, that under that reassurance that all schools would open, under subject to advice and orders of the Florida Department of Health, local departments of health, under that executive order. So, we will, in our applicant, in our template, in our narrative, under Assurance Number 1, where this is addressed, submit the documentation from our superintendent's Health Advisory Committee and all the membership and what they're advising us on that. So, we feel confident that our plan will be supported when we address all of those assurance areas around those other particular mandates. So, I think, did I address your question, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I think so. And because it's such, it's complicated, and the motion that Mrs. McQuinn may, wants us to consider relating to starting school later, how does that fit into how we would address our plan? Because that's another issue that's not consistent with what the governor said. And my concern is that when we go through this and we have a plan, that it, that it actually gets approved, and that we are back here with something that's just not approved, and we get into, because the truth of the matter, this is a political fight more than it is anything else right now on, on the issue of opening schools. And somehow, we've got to divorce ourselves from that political part of this and make a decision for, for these families in our county.
Yeah, so if the start date of the school year is moved back, that doesn't affect this particular template and these assurances? In fact, we're seeing a number of school districts throughout Florida who are backing up their start dates. It's really, the essence is about, if you're going to provide your families the opportunity of a distance-learning environment, how are you going to ensure? We heard some of the feedback this evening from our families and concerns around that distance learning wasn't, and obviously, we know is not as well as what we can do in bricks-and-mortar. So what are we going to do to ensure that we're meeting state and federal laws around ensuring that we meet our students' needs in this type of environment? If a parent so chooses, and we'll be talking about that as well tonight, for parents who want to continue to stay in a distance-learning environment. We've heard that, we saw that in our survey. So, all districts throughout Florida, the majority of the districts are offering this opportunity for their families and for their students. So, we're confident, and talking to other colleagues and other districts, that information we will put in because it's about the distance-learning environment, or what they're calling innovative learning environment, that we should be approved.
Okay, and Mr. Barby here, just a very quick follow-up. If, if a change is made in our state, in our start date, and the charter schools in Palm Beach County open on the 10th of August, what impact does that have on our plan?
I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw, was that for me, did you say?
He shook his head, yes, Mr. Depping.
So, the start date, the start date, the implication of the start date, if it's moved back on our plan?
The, what is the implication if we move our start date to a different date, but the charter schools in Palm Beach County on their plan, they open on August 10th? What is the implication of that kind of a reduction?
So every one of our charter schools are responsible in this executive order to submit their plan. So they get submitted along with ours. So their templates would address their start date, and if they so choose to stick with the original start date, the DOE will be reviewing these templates for each of the charter schools as well, and they would be approved. Now, there is oversight that the district has to review their plans as well. So we would review each of these charter school templates and decide if we support them starting August 10th or we recommend them backing their date up. Off the top of my head, they, and I would probably defer to Ms. Rico as well, I don't think they're dependent upon our start date in any of the contracts. So I think they would have that flexibility to go ahead and start earlier if they so choose to. But we would have to probably review their charter contract to see if there's any specific language.
Before I call any, Mrs. Andrews. Ms. Rico, my understanding of the governor's order is that we have to open in August. Am I, am I reading that incorrectly? That the school, the school districts have to open in August? So, I didn't want to submit a plan that says September, and they shoot it back to us saying it doesn't comply. Can you answer that at this point?
Well, all of, all of the plan has to be approved by DOE. Unless we open in August, as usual, regular, brick-and-mortar, everybody's at school like we did back in February before all this happened, everything has to be approved by DOE as set forth in the assurances in their template. And the implication of them not approving it is our plan is not approved, and then, you know, potentially, funding issues and FTE and all other things are jeopardized. But, you know, all of this that we're talking about has to be approved by DOE. So, it would be the plan submitted, as, as Mr. Oswald said.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Andrews, you were next, and then Mrs. Whitfield, then Ms. Brill.
Thank you. And I just want to go back to the front, because, you know, we got this, this framework, this plan, and a quick turnaround. And we've heard so much information from the parents regards to whatever decision we make here. I really want to make sure that we're getting the bosses of the parents. And one of the things I wanted to ask that I heard, and I don't know if that's true, that the people who actually kind of put this together, the reopening task force people, they, they're no longer, it's sunsetted. So with all the kinds of pieces that we're going to have to put together through our discussion tonight, or things that we know we need to do with distance learning as well as blended and moving forward, we've got a lot of work to do. So one question, is this task force that did this work, they're no longer in existence? I just want to know if that's correct.
Yes, their work was sunsetted, and now, myself, the academic team, working with operations, it was Paul, Mr. Burke, are working on execution of the opening plan.
And I just want to follow up because there's a lot of work that needs to be sorted out of here. I just got it less than 48 hours ago. And as I heard the parents and from my reading and working with a lot of people, there's a lot more specifics. The governor says it has to be a robust plan anyway if you're going to be doing distance learning. If you're not going back to brick-and-mortar, the plan has to be robust. So this conversation here tonight almost will have to be extended as we listen to what parents are telling us and how we're going to move forward. There's a lot more discussion. So I would assume that we're going to have some additional meetings to kind of work through this. I mean, this is just the first start, in my thinking, of where we're going. But I want to ask you, Mr. Oswald, is this just the first step of where we are as we move forward? Trying to get a plan together for the state of Florida?
Yeah, and what the Department of Education has provided is a template around, around these particular five, on the screen here, on these five assurances. So what we're going to go over in this next section of the plan, all of that information and much more will be, they're looking for narrative in each of these five areas for our template. So we are working on that as we speak. You're going to see some of that information in this next section. After it's completed, what we will do will be calling board members to see if you would like the opportunity to take a deeper dive into the template and the information that we will be sending up to the state regarding each of those. So we'll provide each of our board members that opportunity.
I think I'm next, and Mr. Barby here seems to be missing. So maybe I'll just ask my question really quickly.
Whitfield, Mrs. Whitfield, I'm sorry. For some reason, I got kicked out of the system. I don't know why, but did Mrs. Andrews' question get added, answered while I was gone?
Yes, it did, Mr. Barby.
Okay, sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know what happened. All of a sudden, they kicked me out. Maybe they're tired of me. Mrs. Whitfield, go ahead, you're next.
So very simply, Mr. Oswald, I was just thinking that for the public, maybe you could explain to us quickly what it means for the county to go into Phase 2, what that takes?
Yeah, we were going in at the last part of the presentation around moving into Phase 2. You, you want me to go there now, or can you hold that to?
I meant for the whole county, the applying to the governor to ask to go into Phase 2, that part of it. And, you know, the trending down of cases, is that at the end?
Yes, those metrics that's in the governor's reopening plan is what we're using, those metrics. What we are proposing is to use those metrics for the district as well. So, yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
Then, if there are any other questions, I'll go back to...
Yep, I've got a couple other board members who want to ask a question. Ms. Brill, then Vice Chairman Shaw, and then I saw a hand from Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. So I'm not going to ask a question, but Mr. Shaw started the conversation regarding the start date. And so I do want to share my feelings regarding that because it's no secret that I've advocated for a school start date after Labor Day for quite some time. However, that decision should have been made a long time ago, allowing for contract and payroll issues to be resolved. Moreover, my understanding is in line with Mr. Barby's that the state, the Department of Education, will not permit a start date in September at this time. And I know that our principals and teachers have been diligently preparing for distance learning 2.0, and that they feel confident it will be successfully implemented. Mr. Burke sent us an email outlining the ramifications of a later start date. Due to the information he provided, I'll just put it out there now that I will support a delay of one week and request that we keep the later start date permanent. So I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know when we're going to revisit the suggestion, but, you know, I just want to make it clear my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. The next speaker is Vice Chairman Shaw.
All right, I think, you know, I don't want to belabor this, but just why I think this is such a critical issue. We submit a plan on, on... We submit a plan on, on July 31st. Obviously, it's going to take a few days, several days, who knows how long in Tallahassee for them to react to this. Submit it back. If they've turned down the plan or want it changed, then we're in a position that we've got to then change it. If we've made it, if we've made a proposed change to our calendar and we have to change it again, I'm just concerned about how we actually do that without making it, um, just a totally unmanageable situation. If we, if we're doing September 8th and then the state says, no, you've got to start on, um, August 10th, or they say you've got to start on the, before the end of August, how are we going to respond to that to make sure that we can meet that if we've made the change, um, to a later start date?
And the technical assistance that was provided in a number of webinars, um, and I have to go back and review those, there was discussion regarding start date, um, and you can see on the slide, it does talk about starting in August, but I cannot remember if there was a flexibility around that, if, if school boards chose to move that date back. And we can contact, uh, Jacob Olivia tomorrow to see if there is. I know that doesn't help for tonight. But yes, and they also spoke to the issue around the turnaround time of these, 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 uh, templates that we have to submit. And, um, they said they were going to work diligently to turn those around in a quick timeframe, and they were devoting staff. However, again, um, to your point, yes, it, it could be, uh, some implications there if there's changes requested and if we have to go back and forth.
All right, Dr. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. So first, starting with, um, this DOE order, this emergency order, it says in here that, um, the statute requiring school districts to establish a uniform and fixed date for the opening and closing of schools is waived to the extent necessary to give effect to this order. I don't know, I interpreted this as them understanding that the situation might change and that we could request a waiver for that. But the other thing that I want to say about these assurances, because it, it seems to me that, um, that they painted with a broad brush initially and that maybe now based on the governor's comments this afternoon, as I understand them, um, that there is some recognition of the fact that everybody in the state of Florida is, does not have the same viral load, right? And so that they may be, um, I think that they may be awakening up to the fact of the situation we find ourselves in. But you know, by the state's own recovery plan, the White House Coronavirus Task Force, the CDC Guidance on Reopening America, World Health Organization, by everyone's criteria, we're in Phase One, and schools should not be open, right? And so assurance number one in my mind, um, is contrary to that, and I think that we need to explain to them that their own documents would say that Palm Beach County should not be held to the words in assurance number one. Cause it, it just seems to me that maybe somebody wrote the documents who understood, um, the implications of the viral load, but there's somebody else painted a broad brush with this order. That's my interpretation. So, um, I think that we have to do what's right and then, um, have, have those conversations to get them to understand that we are right.
All right, are there any other questions of Mr. Oswald at this point? Otherwise, Mr. Oswald, you want to go back to where you were on the presentation?
Yeah, and what, uh, Dr. Robinson was speaking to, I just put it up on this particular slide, number five here, under the summary of the, the order. So we received a lot of, uh, feedback regarding distance learning. I know you received a lot of feedback regarding distance learning. And the academic team and Dr. Sheffield is going to go into and highlight the, the major improvements that have happened to really strengthen what we will be delivering to our community come the start of this school year. In addition, the partnerships of who we worked with, uh, Mr. Wahaka and Mr. McCormick will also talk about the ESC and, uh, special needs students and how, uh, our English language learners and improvements that are happening there. Mr. Howard will talk a lot in depth about the improvements in, in as much as recent days around how we're addressing the connectivity issue that was supposed to...
Mr. Oswald? I'm, I'm under the impression that we're not having audio go out to the people listening. Can we check on that before you go too much further?
Board members, just a quick update. Apparently, we took a power hit and that affected the audio. We're working on it, and we put a slate up that says that there's technical difficulties. I'll keep you posted on when we can resume, okay? Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So, Andrew, are we off the air right now? All they see is the slate on the screen?
Mr. Barbeary, can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, ma'am. Um, what's, what time is it? It's, uh, 8:45. Why don't we break it till 8:50? And hopefully by then it'll come back. So we'll take a break till 8:50.
Thank you.